Your city council this evening, Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. All right, would you please join in the pledge, which will be led by at-large city council member Dave Bozen?
Please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, as well as the minutes of the December 5th, 2022, regular session as proposed.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you. We have just a couple of things to do before we move into the meat of our council, but is Officer Joe... Jake? Jacobic, are you here? All right, come on up for, come on up front. See, you were wrestling with the little one back there. All right, so the other night, I was able to attend the Battle of Waterloo ceremony, and it was, to our surprise, incredible surprise, that one of the inductees into the Hall of Fame was Officer Jacobic, right? And, you know, I thought that was because for multiple reasons. You know, one, it's a huge honor to be inducted into any Hall of Fame. Number two, to be able to kick indoors for other young ladies to be able to go through, and so I thought that was so special. I wanted you to be here. We have a slide up on there, no wrestling photos, though. But we just wanted to honor you and thank you so much for being here with the city of Waterloo, but for such an awesome, awesome story in being inducted to the Hall of Fame. So, congratulations. Do you have any comments for us? Maybe any, any young lady looking out there and maybe thinking about doing it?
Stick with it and follow your dreams. I mean, I was the only girl on my team up until college, so it can be intimidating, but stick with it and it'll happen, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Next, I want to call up this rascal. I mean, I mean, not, I mean, this guy by the name of Pat Trilor. Is Fire Chief Trilor here? Is he not here again?
He left.
I appreciate him telling you officially this time, but would you please come up, sir? So we have two of our department heads. Sandy Greco is not here this evening, and Sandy works in our Public Works Department, and Sandy has been an employee of the city of Waterloo for fifty, fifty years, I believe? Fifty, fifty-four, fifty-four years, right? Yeah, that's not true. But, you know, during the State of the City, we had the opportunity to acknowledge Sandy, and she quickly took vacation after the State of the City. At least she did stay for the State of the City, but that's another, another subject, but... It's an inside joke, but I just want to say, I've, I've had the opportunity to work with Fire Chief Pat Trilor for, I don't know how many years I was on council, but as mayor, and I'll tell you, there are a lot of people that are leaders, there are a lot of people that may be managers, there are a lot of people that may be supervisors, but Pat is a leader. He's been a sounding board for safety within this community. He has helped us during COVID when there wasn't a lot of places to call around the country to figure out what to do with COVID or how to handle that. This city was able to lean on Pat and the fire department. When it comes to decisions that need to be made, that may be outside of his department and giving some input, Pat was someone that I would always call on that was unbiased, unapologetic to help with decision-making, and so he has been a friend to our community, he's been a friend to the fire department, and I couldn't let this time go by without being able to honor him for his service and sacrifice in his pending retirement, but this says, Pat Trilor, nineteen sixty-seven through two thousand and twenty-two, I mean nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and twenty-two. And, and what it reads on here, it says, "There is no higher calling than serving others. The citizens of Waterloo want to thank you for your tenure and your dedication to our city." So, Pat, we wanted to congratulate you and tell you thanks so much for everything you've done, sir, and we know you'd have a couple comments.
Put that aside so I don't drop it, but thanks, Mayor. I mean, I really appreciate that. I've considered you a friend, and I've enjoyed working with you and not for you. That's what I've always felt. And to this council, each and every one of you, I appreciate your support. I know I haven't worked with some of you very long, but I've enjoyed working with you. I've enjoyed this council, I've enjoyed a number of different councils over the years, so thanks to what you do, sometimes it's not a thankful job, right? And the department heads. The fire department couldn't do what we do without the help of Public Works. We've got a great relationship with PD. I mean, the finance department pays our bills, pays our salaries, so a lot of times, it seems like police and fire get all the accolades, but a lot of other departments, we couldn't do our job without them, right? The, any accomplishments I've had has been through the help of the staff at the fire department, so I've been lucky to work with a number of talented people over the last eleven years or so since I've been chief. Interestingly enough, I was born in nineteen sixty-seven, so I thought Quentin was giving me a jab about my age when, when he said, "I served since nineteen sixty-seven," but I was born in nineteen sixty-seven. To the staff at the fire department, command staff, awesome battalion chiefs captain, medical supervisor, we've got a good thing going there, and it's because of operations. We have an excellent fire department, and we know where we're going, and once we get there, we know what we're doing. It's pretty simple stuff, and I'd like to thank my wife and daughter for their support over the years, too, and that's all I got.
You know where you're going, and you guys get there within four minutes, right? All right, so thank you so much, good serve for all your work, and we wish you a very, very happy retirement. And we are going through a fire chief search right now. The, the goal is to, I believe, to have someone onboard, what, forty-five, sixty days, a couple months. We will have, we received some applications last week or so, and we're reviewing the applications. We do have an interim fire chief, Mr. Troy Lux, so we thank him for stepping up right now as well, and so we will move through that process and get someone hired within the next couple months, so, thank you. This is also time for oral presentations, your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what's on your heart. Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just have one thing, or two things I'd like to say. Firstly, thank you, Chief, and Officer Snyder for allowing me to go on a ride along with our police force this past week. It's always great to be able to go speak with officers, get a chance to go around town and see it from their perspective and the hard work that they do, so thank you again for that. I know it can be a little cumbersome getting a councilman there and having to deal with all of that stuff, but I really appreciate it being on there, and I got to put on a vest. Never wore one of those before. They're a lot lighter than I thought they would be. And secondly, congratulations to the marshallese community on your gospel day. For one hundred sixty-five years since the island was visited, I learned a lot about the community that day. Something I'm going to be working on with the county and the state, actually, is to get the marshallese language onto the DMV so that they can get a license, because that's the language that we're missing here, and we have a large, growing population, so we should try to get that to happen, so thank you for that, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. You attended an event?
Yes.
All right. Council, anyone else? All right.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second, and I forgot to mention, December twenty-first, there will not be a bridge lighting that evening, so we'll get back to you on a different date. The motion has been made with the second to close public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to receive the consent agenda in addition to one A1 bill's payment for December twelfth in the amount of three million, one hundred nineteen thousand, eighteen dollars and eighty-three cents, and for December nineteenth in the amount of three million, four hundred seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Council, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Just really quickly, we have Shelley Steph in here today, and what's the title again? Public Works Coordinator. If you would please stand up, Shelley. She'll be working with, in the Public Works Division, and I guess kind of step, replacing Sandy. Most of it, so we want to thank you so much for joining the Waterloo family, and we look forward to working with you in the future, so, thank you. All right, we also have one here who has a really tough task ahead of her. Ms. Brittany Perkins, would you please stand? Brittany will be the new executive secretary to the mayor. She's going to start on December thirtieth. I can't wait. And probably some of you as well. She comes from the Waterloo Community School, so Brittany, we're looking forward to working with you, and we thank you for joining the Waterloo family as well. All right, could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the Waterloo Regional Airport Pave Airport Fire Station Parking Lot CARES-funded project number three dash one nine dash zero zero nine four dash zero zero five five parentheses CARES parentheses.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to a Pave Airport Fire Station Parking Lot funded with federal dollars? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Council, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to airport director for review.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk.
All right, the estimate for this project was one hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars. Our first bidder is Veith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Their base bid is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars. Second bidder is Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. Excuse me. Their bid amount is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred, or excuse me, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars. Our third bidder is Woodruff Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount is a hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, ninety-four cents. Our final bidder is Owen Contracting Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Their bid amount is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars, twenty cents.
That was about the closest I've been, a sixty dollars on a hundred and sixty-something thousand dollar project. All right, thank you. Could someone take number three?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the Waterloo Regional Airport Improve Terminal Building Upgrade HVAC and CCTV Project number three dash one nine dash zero zero nine four dash zero five four CARES.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the upgrading of HVAC and the CCTV project for the regional airport? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Council, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to the airport director for review.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, our engineer, ah, can't talk tonight. Our engineer's estimate for tonight is, for the base bid, four hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars, and their alternate bid estimate is thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. We had one bidder. It was Woodruff Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. Their base bid is seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. Their alternate is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars.
All right, thank you. Need some more review on that one. All right, someone take number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the South Street and West Ninth Street Mini Roundabout, Iowa DOT grant project number CS dash TSF dash eight one five five parentheses seven 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 parentheses dash dash eight five dash oh seven.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the South Street and Ninth Street Mini Roundabout? Yes, sir.
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. On previous conversations about this, I recall concerns about tractor-trailers being able to negotiate this roundabout. Was a study done on the amount of such traffic that utilizes this intersection, and what was the alternative route for such traffic?
All right. Mr. Muhammad, would you like to speak to tractor-trailer traffic?
Muhammad Alahi, interim director of traffic operations. Yes, we had a, we had a study done, and there was a council work session about it. The number of trucks are very, very limited. There are not that many trucks, but the design was modified to accommodate the trucks, if any. They'll, they'll go over the center and also on the sides, so we're paving those areas with concrete, colored concrete, so to accommodate.
So you made accommodations for?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the Mini Roundabout? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor. Sir. I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Council, Mini Roundabout in question? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to the Public Works Division manager for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Our engineer's estimate is four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Our first bidder is Veith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount is six hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. Our second bidder is Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount- Their bid amount is $523,353. Our third bidder is Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Reinbeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $560,398.20. And our final bidder is Owen Contracting Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is 400, or excuse me, $543,619.56.
Thank you. Could someone take five, six, and seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau Recommendation of awarding $99,000 for 12 events and two capital projects occurring in FY 2023. Number six is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Riverwise Engineering LLC of Durango, Colorado in the amount of $580,380 in conjunction with the final design for the construction of a whitewater course in the Cedar River in downtown Waterloo. And number seven is adopting a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Strand Associates, Inc. of Madison, Wisconsin in the amount not to exceed $48,000 to provide bidding-related engineering services for the third part of renewable natural gas products and authorize the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone here this evening that would have questions on five, six, or seven?
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. This is on number six and number seven. During initial discussion on this project, questions such as cost, recoup of same environmental impact, liability, and future maintenance were asked. The answers presented were all estimates. Do you have any facts from other areas that have whitewaters on their, on these questions about what kind of impact did it have for the city? I note response, I note reading design, excuse me, letter from Riverview, Riverwise, a reference to the Sixth Street Dam and the possibility of removal. Do we have a dam there or is it just a ripple? No time, no time do they speak of the dam. As be, they do speak of the dam as being historical. Has that been researched? On number seven, should this project continue? What is the anticipated benefit to the taxpayers in ample quantities of renewable gas and cost of development versus current prices? In other words, is this a cost-effective project? I would like to see a copy of that projection. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, Randy, I know, I mean, I know we've done some council forums or whatever, but can you talk about number seven and then we'll come back with number six?
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So, yes, when it comes to the environmental impact on this, currently what we are doing now both at the wastewater plant and at the lagoon, the gas is currently being flared off. So, there's actually no, so what we're actually want to do is more environmentally friendly where we're actually going to take that gas, capture it, clean it, scrub it, and then turn it back into pipeline quality. So, then it'll actually, you know, right now, everything as far as the rent factors, this looks like where it actually potentially could be a revenue generator for the city. So, when it's all said and done, instead of actually costing the taxpayers, there's actually a potential for us to earn revenue from this and we'll also have the positive side of it to where, you know, instead of just flaring that off, it's a renewable resource.
All right, thank you. Let's come back to number six. Mr. Knutson?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. Right now, there is currently a small dam just downstream of the railroad bridge. It is a, about three foot high. It is something that we are looking at doing either a partial or a full removal. That's to be determined yet. Some of it has to do with the shippo that we have to go through, shippo process, historical preservation process that we have to go through along with, we have to, well, the other part of it is we have to do something with that dam. It is, it is currently unsafe to allow in its current condition to allow kayaks to go through it. So, we have to modify it in some way, shape, or form. Whether we remove it or not, that's yet to be determined. As far as maintenance of the whitewater course, there really is, there's nothing movable in there. Every year in the fall that we will have to take out some blocks, so to speak, that go in to create the ripples in each one of the holes and then reinstall them in the spring, but they'll come out of the river, be stored, and then reinstalled in the, in the spring anyway. So, there shouldn't be a whole lot as far as maintenance, wear and tear, movable things like that. So, it should be minimal.
You or Noel speak to, maybe this is a Noel question, speak to potential, what is a functioning whitewater course? What does it do for a community?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. So, it's very similar to, you know, our recreational trail system, our park system. I mean, we're basically trying to bring a, an increased quality of life here to draw workforce here. Obviously, you can see in the census numbers, we're not increasing greatly in population yet, and so we're doing these things to try and bring more people to want to come and live, work, and play in Waterloo.
All right, and so you've seen smaller communities that have had these projects be able to?
Smaller communities, larger communities like Des Moines as well are working on these similar types of projects and obviously that's one of the reasons why the state made the funding out there to help increase the state population again.
And so, this project is, could, if we are successful, could be a Destination Iowa project potentially. Does that provide any funding for this? Or if we did get it, what would that look like?
The Destination Iowa is a 40/60% match project. So, again, we're hoping to get some state funding to help us with this.
All right, thank you. All right. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Just really quick on the whitewater. I know we've talked about this a long time and prior to the first time I ran, I read an article about Manchester's Whitewater Park and a gentleman who had not been in the community for a long time coming back and seeing all the improvements that his town had made in the 30-plus years that he had been gone. And I think we sometimes forget that we are not building for today. We are building for tomorrow and we may not reap immediately the rewards, but we can't continue stagnation. That's part of the reason why we are in the position that we are in and things like the Whitewater Park, the Marina, some of those things, yep, are going to take a little bit of tax money to be able to do, but we are also seeing when we have the kinds of events and kinds of attractions that we have, we're reaping that reward. And I think, you know, as evidenced, we just awarded about $100,000 for the 12, 12 events, you know, with the convention is Visitors Bureau. We are making record profit from the people coming to Waterloo. We want to make Waterloo as attractive as possible and this is just another avenue for us to do that. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
And I, I just want to echo what Director Bennett said about the, the natural gas project. It's, it's not big and it's not a sexy project, but one, we as a city made a commitment and we're among only five cities that we would be 100% renewable energy by 2035. This project is going to go a long way towards doing that because it's, it's our natural gas. We're, we're doing something right now that environmentally isn't great and this is going to change. In addition, given where natural gas markets are and where they're likely to say, not only are we doing something good for the environment, but we're also doing something good for our bottom line. So, I'm really glad that we're leading the way on this. And, and like Mr. Foyce said, that we're showing a long-term vision and leadership with these types of things. So, thank you to staff for putting in the time and work on, on these projects.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
For number seven, something that I remember in the work session that we spoke about is this is third party. And it said it clearly in the statement here as well, third party. So, I just want to remind the public that we are doing this in an intelligent way, in a less, far less risky way. We are not taking on this project to do it of our, completely internally. It will be a third-party project. I think that's really important to remember.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Thank you. Could someone take eight, nine, and 10?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving Amendment Number Seven to develop an agreement with Central Property Holdings LLC to include a grant for extra fill activities in the amount of $136,983.05. Extension of the timeline to finish to October 31st, 2023 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and execute all necessary documents. Next is a resolution approving a development agreement with WBM LLC for the construction of two commercial buildings located west of 2843 Geraldine Road with a minimum assessment agreement in the amount of $1,034,700 with rebates of five years at 50% and a development agreement of $250,000 for Phase One and rebates of two years at 50% for Phase Two and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Is that number 10?
One more.
Oop, just kidding.
And next is a resolution approving a request by the City of Waterloo and James L. Grady Revocable Trust UA/ A dated March 4th, 2013 and Janet J. Grady Revocable Trust UA dated March 4th, 2013 on an easement agreement FDR ingress and egress to city-owned property for a term of five years ending December 31st, 2027 and a yearly compensation to the owner of $500 per year located adjacent to 570 West Charles Road Mid-America Substation and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
There we go. So, we have a motion and second for eight, nine, and 10. Is there anyone that would like to speak to either one of these items?
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. This is on number eight. I note in this agreement under B2, a fee simple title conveyance of Lot 3 will be to the city. Is there a portion of this old church property being given back? Also, the discovery was known by everyone in the area except the city? I'm, I'm from out of town.
I don't even know what the question is. Noel, you want to comment? I think it was a point.
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. So, the amendment on for tonight is a development agreement, amendment with Central Property Holdings. Essentially, they have found some subsurface materials that people were not aware was there, older foundations, we believe from, potentially from the church, from the school, and maybe even some houses that were there before the church and school underneath the parking lot. The city has in the past helped with projects that have found subsurface unknowns. I guess I would call them in terms of old foundations, soil surface that were unexpected. So, this is pretty standard from what we've done from other projects. In terms of the portion being deeded over to us, there is a portion of a small lot north of the detention area. Again, in talking with Central Property Holdings and the partnership with the city and them redeveloping the area, the city will be acquiring that and looking at it for development of either residential or commercial property in the area.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to eight, nine, or 10? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
As far as number eight, I remember back when this was first starting and the developer, Mr. Anderson, got ahold of me, asked me to come over and they were just doing the foundation. They had dug up and there was all kinds of materials laying around, asbestos and everything else. There was going to be a huge cost to remove that material and I see this $136,000 and I heard Noel say the city helped with that. Well, the cost, my understanding that Mr. Anderson can't correct me if I'm not correct on this, but the cost was well over that $136,000. So, just needed to get that out there.
Okay. All right, counsel? Sir?
I, I've got a couple of questions for Noel on nine and, eight and nine also. And on, on number nine, the, what's the $250,000 grant for?
So, the city typically, our TIP districts can cover private and public land. And so, essentially what we've done in the Geraldine area specifically since we worked in partnership, in this case with the Martinsons further west, we've been, we've done three phases of Geraldine for rise roads, but we put in the road systems, they put in the, the water, the sewer, the electrical, gas and all that. And so, we have typically paid for the land. So, it makes it the same as city land where we would give it for a dollar by granting that to the development. And then if they are over a million dollars in new taxable value, they're also eligible for the rebates. In this case, five years at 50% for the Phase One. And then when they build the Phase Two, they would get an additional two years by policy.
So, what, if I'm, if I hear you correctly, that land just to the west of 24, 2843 Geraldine is valued at $250,000?
That is correct.
Okay. And, and that would have been appraised because the assessed value is $34,700.
Correct. I mean, obviously, the, the empty lots are going to be a lot less than, than what it would be at for sale value.
Okay. And then explain the $136,983 for central holding property, what, what we're paying for that and what funding that's coming out of?
So, that would come out of the Logan TIP district for funding as a, as a project in there. That was based on the receipts received from the developer for the additional costs of foundation removal.
But that foundation, that went in two years ago. So, is this something that happened two years ago or is this something that just happened recently? It's a legitimate question.
I believe some of it was from older, from the original foundation and the rest has been, was they've been working on developing the, the parking lot in front. Developers are here too to answer any further questions on that.
Yeah, because I was, I was a no vote to extend the development agreement last November and I was pretty adamant that it wasn't going to be done by this December. And now we're extending it to October 31st, another, another 10 months. We're going to be six years out into this project. But, so, I, I would like to know of this $136, if it's recent or if it's past. Because if it's, if this is, if this is something that they dealt with when they put the footings in, maybe this should have come to us a lot sooner than two years after the footings were put in.
I, I don't have the receipts with me today. They might be able to tell you a little bit more, but they are over a good span of time.
Be great to hear.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anderson came to me. I took pictures of the fill and stuff that was there. There was additional cost that he was going to have to incur and I had told him to get ahold of Noel Anderson because for me, it didn't seem right that he should have to bear that entire cost from a standpoint of all of these things that had been buried in the land and everything. So, this is something that is not just recent, I guess is the best way to put it.
Right, so.
Maybe you just want to know if it's way back or close up, just when the timeframe?
Well, exactly, sir, because I don't, I, I find it odd that we're, if it's, if it, when the foundation went in two years ago, why we would be paying for it now, number one. And, and it's, it's just cumbersome because, like I say, it should, it should have come to us before now if that's the case. And it wasn't our land to begin with. We, that land belonged to CVS Pharmacy. It wasn't like it was land that we had acquired and then sold, correct? We, we gave Mr. Anderson a $400,000 grant to, to help purchase the $750,000 or $700,000 lot next to CVS Pharmacy from CVS, correct?
That is correct. We, we never owned the land. We were just a partner in the project.
Right, okay. But it would, if, yeah, if Mr. Anderson could, could help me out here on how old the, the problem is out there, I would appreciate it.
Sherman Wise, 919 West Parker Street. I'm a contractor on the project. The project has been ongoing throughout, understando, understandably, you know, we, we understand this, the six years, but the, as you, if you have been over there recently?
I drive by it weekly.
Okay. Stop over. We can show you some things, but as you can see, the, the recess pond and the concrete has been poured. The recess pond, that's where a lot of the issue has been at. And that's been the most recent, maybe within the last two, three months. Even the concrete of the parking lot has been poured up until, up until maybe last Thursday. So, that's where we're receiving a lot of those issues. Dirt, taking that. Dirt, taking that to make sure that it's safe, taking it out to the dump, things like that. That's where the process and the, the money, because they're pulling in ten concrete basement. And I have videos of it as well.
And, and what's causing the, the additional ten-month delay?
Rodney Anderson, four zero three Franklin. Like you were saying, Mr. Amos, there's been extra costs with it. It's been an ongoing situation. So it's not like, like I said, a one thirty-six, basically, yeah, that's under the numbers that we've had and that we've paid for, but that's where we're at now.
Again, but my, my last question was, what's causing the ten-month delay?
Ten, in what?
Well, we're delaying this till October thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, which is an additional ten months because the development agreement that, that, that the council voted five to two last November was to be up and running December of this year.
Pandemic.
We had the pandemic last year. I'm not, I won't be argumentative, I apologize, but, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, is.
No, you, I just want to say, Chris, Mr. Foyce, no, you're not argumentative. No, basically, it's the pandemic and you, basically, we have to understand, like, your products, things that you're getting, it's not just unnecessary, it's going to come in in four months. I mean, we've done an outstanding job, you know, there, no, there's no way we can be argumentative at this point of history in Waterloo, Iowa. Our team won't do it, I know the city council won't do it. This is basically something that I think we've done damn good for all this time and what we've done throughout what we went through, you know? So there's, there are ten months. We want it to be four months because it'll cost us even more to have it in ten months. But this is something that, you know, comes along with the territory now. And we didn't know things were going to happen like that, but you know, here, here we are now, you know? And we're not, you know, asking the city like, hey, we want the other seventy-five thousand that we put in, or sixty-five, whatever it was. We're just being, you know, a fair player, you know, in the game with everyone else, that's about it.
Right, and, and so, or you're dealing, when you say pandemic, are you dealing with supply chain issues? Are you dealing with, because like I say, last November, we, we had this, we were back and forth, you and I, and, and we were going to open this December.
Yeah, but nothing's a guarantee. I mean, not in today's society, you know? What we needed, we have now. It's a supply chain, but like, the RT Union is coming in in July. So, you know, that's something that we was hoping that we'd get in April, but it's going to be July. One company has us up to November. But October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, our doors will be open.
Okay, thank you.
And you have to come shop there, Mr. Bowson.
Oh, I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be there for the ribbon cutting.
Okay.
All right, counsel.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Just a quick question for Mr. Anderson. Will the building itself be completed prior to then, prior to that date?
The completion of the building will be on August. But we were saying to get the store stocked and to get it ran through as far as doing your, your trial runs, making sure everything is working, your refrigeration, your POS system, your internet system, it's going to be thirty to forty-five days. So we don't want to have it in, okay, September, we're going to be opening, and you've got a rush of people, and then things go down. So the company that's helping with us with that is United Natural Foods Inc., UNFI. They're making sure it's thirty to forty-five days. They have over a hundred years' experience with stores. So that's why we're saying August, I mean, October thirty-first, because it's going to be done in August of twenty-three.
You got employees too, right? So you need to, well, I just, I mean, it's a simple question, though, you got to train your employees as well, right?
So that's another component, so that's my portion of it. I've been doing staffing in the Cedar Valley for eight, nine years now. And so what we'll be doing is working on customer service. We want to, you know, make sure that we're being safe as possible, bringing the groceries out to our customers, things like that. So we're going to have to train them on different components of, you know, train our management staff, train our, on the floor, general staff. So that's going to take two or three months as well, so that's part of the process. Get the keys to the store, fill it up, but also make sure that we have the best customer service that, you know, Waterloo can, you know, see.
Yes, sir.
If someone is interested in working there, how do they get ahold of you?
Call, contact, contact Premier Staffing, we're at twenty-eight oh nine University Avenue. So they can contact us anytime, specifically, management right now. So if anybody is looking, they can contact us right now. We're looking for management staff, that can be Derry, Assistant Story Director, you know, that, that, we have several different positions that we're hiring for as of right now. So we're trying to build that team currently. When we get the keys to the store, we're definitely going to be ramping that up. And our team is super excited. We got six internal staff that's going to be doing some hiring down at, on-site and out at our location on University.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
The last thing we'll say is, like, Councilman, you know, Foyce was saying, you know, we're building for the future. You know, this, this store is something that has never been done. And I totally agree with Mr. Bowson when he say, hey, you know, what about this date and that date? But when you're doing something to this magnitude, it, making history is not easy, right? You know, so basically, what we're doing here, this won't be the last thing that we're going to do. But, you know, I'm going to put my money in my neighborhood and my community every day of the week because we stay here.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder.
I, I have to abstain my vote.
Yep.
On which one?
On number eight. But yes for, what was that, seven and nine?
Nine and ten.
Nine and ten, so abstaining on eight and then yes on nine and ten.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowson.
No on eight, yes on nine and ten.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving changes to the city travel and meetings policy effective December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Number twelve, resolution approving a payment services agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. and Invoice Pay, Inc. for accounts payable automation and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number thirteen, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Municipal Collections of America, Inc. for debt collection services for the City of Waterloo and authorizing mayor, city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to speak to these three items?
David Drier, thirty-one, forty-five West Fourth Street. This is on number twelve. What does a payment service do for the city? Are we having an outside firm pay the bills as opposed to our own finance department? Do, staff doing the payments? I, I, I need to wrap my head around why we're having an outside payment service.
All right, and Miss Finance Manager, could you elaborate?
Bridget Wood, Finance Manager. So the accounts payable automation, we're having, it's basically the same process. The only thing that's different is the checks will be printed off-site. And then we'll also be able to offer ACH payments for vendors and vendor cards.
So we're kind of updating what we're doing?
Yes.
All right. Yes, sir.
I didn't, just didn't want her to leave.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? All right, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, my, my only question was, since we're keying it in and then checks are cut elsewhere, or, or they're deposited, or there, there's a card, what's our, what's, what's our, our policy, or how do we deal with if we, if it's keyed in incorrectly?
At that time, we would contact the vendor and let them know that we needed to have the check voided, and then we could reissue the correct one. We could also still be able to do in-house pickup for checks as well if we needed to do that.
So there are checks and balances in-house prior to it, it getting downloaded to send out for checks to be generated?
So the, it, the process is exactly the same as it is now, except we're sending a file to, is it Novus Pay, to have them cut our checks for us. So all the same checks and balances are still in play until we send the file to them.
And I only ask because when I, when I researched this online, I, I looked at other, other departments. They, they were having issues on how they set up when it's, when it's keyed in incorrectly and how to get, they get the money reimbursed or the, or the check voided.
Yeah, so we would be sending them a check for our total amount of the batch payment, and then they would be cutting the payments out from that. So if we had any issues with any of our payments, we could contact them and let them know that we needed to correct one of them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take fourteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution directing filling award for city council vacancy by appointment.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Just today, and I don't think the council know, maybe one or two, maybe, we received a petition for election, special election. And so right now, we need to take a look at the validity. We need to have further conversation with the county auditor. We need to take a look at timeframes. So if possible, like to push this to January third. So the, the challenge is that we have an election in November. So we would have a special election potentially February, March. Then we turn around and have another election several months later. So just some time challenges. So before we put you in a situation where you have to make a rushed decision with that new information from what we received today, I think it would be better to take a look January third so we can give you a, a larger picture of what would be at stake.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this resolution until January third.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, postpone to January third and we'll have more info. Could someone take fifteen, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file considering passed for the second time an ordinance providing for the general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the newly described Wrath Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan area in the City of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Any questions on this item? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowson.
No.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. I believe Eric Noel, this has significant time challenges. So just to let you know, time is of the essence. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Bowson.
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion considering passed for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowson.
No.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sixteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive filing considering passed for the first time an ordinance permitting the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by adding Section Three Failure to Page, Chapter Three General Penalty Title One Administration.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions, counsel, anyone? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive file considering passed for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.